All the leaders and uh, uh, Trusty Feathers.
All of you, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this chance to meet and to address the business of the college. We thank you so grateful for the staff and the faculty and administration here at the school and all the students and the services provided to our community. What's our decisions today and we do everything that's pleasing in you and nothing is not, Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
Let the leaders do what I know the United States of America. To the Republic which stands on its ancient, uh, invisible, with every key that's just around.
We all must also say amen.
All right, welcome, welcome to the meeting. Uh, approval and agenda, minutes consideration approval of November agenda.
No, we do. I would like to make a motion to amend the November agenda to add, uh, one point nine.
Now to. We will.
If you underwrite restrictions, but.
Considerate thing when I add the number four consideration approval of real estate purchase.
Yes, I want a consideration approval of bands from real properties.
Okay, got a motion? Second. All right, uh, all of you favor. I vote. Right, uh, consideration approval of the November amendment agenda. Is that, that's what it is. It's going to be covered by. Uh, consideration approval of minutes from the October board meeting.
Make a motion we approve last ones for me and then it says presented. Second.
All of you favor. All right, vote. Consideration of the college financial, excuse me, college financial report, Charlie.
Okay, so, uh, Dr. Borgos, we're looking at the last fiscal year compared to the current as of September thirtieth. Um, so very similar to what you've seen, um, in previous months. Uh, tuition fees, uh, a little below where we were last year, um, due to enrollment patterns, you know, you saw that same pattern last month. Um, other areas very similar, state appropriations being a little bit more than this year, federal grants, you'll see later. Um, that's, uh, a function of the ARPA funds that we spent to purchase the former Billings Jeans property. Uh, others are, are very small there. And then the next page looking at our expenses, uh, again, for the most part, pretty comparable to last fiscal year. And then finally, on page thirteen, look at revenues minus expenses, we're actually just a little bit ahead due to that influx of the ARPA money, uh, plus a little extra on the state appropriations. Following that, the next couple pages, those both same numbers, uh, in the details. Page sixteen looks at our budget versus actual as of October, excuse me, preliminary October numbers. So that's roughly third of the fiscal year in. Um, looking at the top half of our revenue, we can see our tuition fees are tracking nicely. Against budget, um, about, they're about sixty-five percent of our budgeted tuition. Um, or spring, uh, registration is underway, so there's, there's just barely a little bit of that included in this, so we'll see that continue to grow as those registrations come in. Uh, other categories, very much on track with where you would expect at this time of the year. Um, and then the bottom half, they're looking at our expenses, using that thirty-three percent in the fiscal year as a guide. You can see that, um, most, all your categories are at or below that target. With scholarships being a little bit ahead, uh, given their nature of being, uh, more or less foot between falls, right? Following that, the next page, then you can see on page seventeen is, uh, just those same numbers, uh, just the details. And then on page eighteen, looking at our, uh, capital budget deals, notice that, uh, the second line from the top there is the insurance proceeds. That's on the best activity center. So we did receive the proceeds, um, for the insurance claim on that due to the water damage that we sustained a couple of years ago. Uh, due to some burst pipes. So that's that million eighty-nine thousand there, um, that we have received. So, um, there's not a corresponding use of those funds yet, because of course we are just the, still in the very beginning stages of that project. So as that moves on, we'll see those expenses start to come in as we continue to work on that building. Uh, and then finally, at the bottom of that page from the last line, the CDL training center purchase, that's the former Billings Jeans, uh, properties. That's that purchase there that was funded, uh, through the ARPA grant proceeds. Following that, then looking at our cash position on page twenty, looking at the pie graph, um, again, very typical for this, uh, point in the fiscal year. Moving into our spring term. Uh, our, we still have the same CD, we do not have any changes in that, uh, that we have in people's community, we're just now, it's just now maturing. Um, just this week, so we're in the process of reading that out right now. Um, and then we do not have any bids to report this month. We do have some budget amendments on page twenty-five. Um, a lot of that is just the, uh, amendments that you formally approved in previous months. So the only new items here are in the top half on the operating budget, we have, uh, some personnel changes, that's just, uh, either due to break of term or lower filling vacant positions. And then just some miscellaneous operating expenses there. And then on the bottom half, your capital budget, two items there. One is, uh, we spent just a little bit more, uh, refreshing fleet vehicles, fifteen hundred dollars there, so that's just, uh, bringing that budget up to what we spent. And then, um, the best activities on the insurance proceeds, so that we can, uh, apply those. We got, we had originally only budgeted for a million dollars on that insurance claim, we got just a little bit more than that, so this will bring it up to the actual levels. Any questions?
Uh, Cheryl, when, uh, normally do our CDs come up?
Uh, they vary. Uh, recently, we've been doing three-month maturities because, uh, that's been giving us the highest rate. So we, we kind of let that guide us based on, on the rates in the shorter terms, I think higher returns.
No, we're just on the next one.
Anything else?
A motion.
Motion we accept the financial report as presented and approve the proposed budget change amendments.
Second, you want?
I'll second.
All of you favor. All right. All right, President's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, first I'm going to call Mr. Cooper up to speak about the Fall Job Fair held October twenty-second in Chris Technology Center.
So we had a Fall Job Fair on October twenty-second. Lain and Clark kind of put it together. She's our Director of Board of Course Development. Um, we brought in twenty three employers in the Chris building, and it was a little snow, but it was great. Um, we had people packed an highway, so it was strategically placed, it ended up that if you walked in there, you're going to go through every single one. So it worked out really well. We had about a hundred and thirty people come through, so it was a great event. We had people, we had students and we had the brothers. So it worked out really well. Uh, we had many different types of employers. We had anything from state agencies to retailers to construction. So it was a good event. Had a good turnout. Is there any questions?
Would you happen to know what the, uh, rate is of jobs that people come through, maybe not hills? What that, or is that something that is even tracked?
We kind of look at data. Are you saying the job about?
I mean, this job fair we got a hundred and thirty, how many of those folks get jobs out of there?
No, I don't think we're too tracking because we had some different employers.
Yeah.
Uh, as far as our students, once they finish their degrees and stuff, we track them on a hundred million day report, we follow up after to see where they're at. Those things, as far as the public ban.
And then do you get feedback from those that, uh, put booths up, uh, and, and of how like the next one need to be or what?
Yes, so this one we kind of did a one-off, but usually Lain and partners with other agencies. But she got a needed feedback. Remember, our response to this one was super positive from the people that did respond, so. A lot of people wanting to come back and wanting us to have a familiar use in the future.
It'd be interesting to know what these employers, uh, how many employees they recruit.
I don't feel like that idea. And I talk with Lain and Cindy, you know, sometimes, and then it was just on the twenty-second, so they take them to.
I might have said much to come up to get, yeah.
The general feedback that we get from the participants, is very positive.
Yeah.
And they feel like they get a lot of interaction with potential employees and have, you know, said, they, they think it's a successful event. They never put a number on, well, we hired, we were looking for ten and we hired five.
And, and those are immediate hires, and sometimes you make a touch and three years later that part of the organization somehow.
Do you have non-college students coming up in this? Yes, this is a college and community.
It's open to the public.
Right.
Because in the Chris, we had a job center too, so sometimes I'll encourage some of those people to go through the job center, participate in these as well.
Neat.
Any other questions? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, on October twenty-sixth, uh, the college through Student Services hosted Trunk Retreat. We had well over fifteen hundred people. Most of the participants got to, uh, take a trip at one point or another during the night to fetch more candy. So, uh, we were subscribed higher than we thought it would be. Uh, a lot of work went into this, a lot of groups and individuals participated and put on, uh, trunks to, uh, serve our community. And had just a huge number of people on campus. So, and we had really lucky weather down as well. Uh, and I'm going to call Andrew Pierce up to speak of our nursing job fair in Sykeson.
So I think last time I talked to you, I got the top of the job fair in October twenty ninth, they have one in Sykeson. Twenty-six employers from the area Dexter, Sykeson, Cape, other places in the appeal came and thirty-eight students roughly went through the job fair. And many of those employers have reached out to Ms. Pike and told them that they've already sent offers to students, they know through the job fair, so. And they, those students will graduate in December. Any questions?
Thank you. And now I'm going to call up Professors Buddy and Cindy White to speak about the Fall Showcase and Fall Concerts.
Uh, Fall Showcase was October twenty-ninth. We had a little bit of a, a Halloween theme in that we booked into the showcases with our large ensemble performances with the fleet prop sets and scenery. And we did, um, ghostbusters and. I can't remember, we booked in, it's like two large ensembles. And then in between that, we have our individual students performing that are studying either private piano, private instruments or private voice. And they do a mix of literature that is both classical in nature and, and Broadway. So that's there. For many of them, it was their first time on stage. We have a lot of first semester students, sometimes you turn over rates differently. So we have a theme returning a lot that are brand new to us. So Showcase was, was a successful event. On to you.
Okay, and let's not, November nineteenth, our, uh, our, uh, twenty-twenty four ball concert, uh, featured performances by three, uh, Rivers College Community Choir, the, the Jazz Band and the Symphonic Band. The community choir is directed by Pam Becker. It consists of approximately thirty-five members from across Southeast Missouri. This was the first performance of that choir, which had their first rehearsal on September ninth. Uh, the college jazz band performed a mix of traditional and contemporary selections. The band includes student and community members. And our forty-five members in the symphonic band capped off the evening performance. The band consists around college students, adult community members, uh, area band directors, music educators, high school and junior high students. Our members ranging in age from fourteen to over eighty years old. We have several families throughout the band, mother, father, uh, daughter, son, uh, through Rivers alumni and band director Donovan Fogg. Turns the band load of students every Monday night from Donovan to our rehearsals. And many of our student performers are members of the all-district high school and junior high bands. And some of our college students are members of the All Collegiate Band, which will perform on January. At the eighty-sixth Annual Music Educators Day Mission, uh, Catholic video starts. And our students make up one-fourth of the percussion section with the All Collegiate Band. And I must say that was always interesting, played about twenty-nine thousand steps, about thirteen marks and thirty-five flights steps. I'm going up to his numbers yet, and I'll, I'll keep working.
We're doing something to something this semester. It's not on that calendar, but we have split our collegiate choir off for another performance. We don't usually have three because, uh, one of our students, Anthony Hawkes, who is a Donovan High School graduate, is a composer. And started composing when he arrived here at Rivers. He uses our computers, using our Mac Labs and Genali. Um, he uses our computers to put in a presentation that could easily be published from Charlie's form. And last year he painted with, with a small piece and challenged and derived all parts of the Latin Mass, which have been set through the centuries by Mozart, Beethoven, Schubert, Haydn. Um, so he has written a period of already created songs written on his day. And, uh, part of that was he wanted to use piano and organ. So we're taking that concert December eighth down to the First United Methodist Church, where one of our Raptoids, uh, Mason German, who graduated from our program in Central Methodist Bachelor of Music Education, teaches at Clearwater Schools now. Is going to not only bring his students to sing with us, but play the organ. I have a local student who attends Southeast Missouri State University, Malachi Williams, who's going to play cello. Doctor Pupis, our accompanist here, is playing piano. And joining us on that December eighth concert to not only do Anthony's mass will be choirs from Clearwater High School, Donovan High School, Dexter High School, all of whom are doing pieces of their own. And then we join together for the mass and one mass part vis a vis.
With ninety singers.
Ninety total singers, I think, will be involved in that. So, um, that's just a joint effort to bring people together and to highlight something that, uh, Anthony is the featured person on this lovely creative poster that I absolutely love because it's, it's so creatively quirky, um, besides always piano and a pipe organ. And Anthony is the one who's playing. Um, so we're featuring a piece written by one of our local students. And I have his permission today to email some colleges about him and send his music class, if I have the permission. He graduates in December and yesterday talked to me at length and is going to find his next thing, which I said, I can't imagine not being in school. So I said, okay, you have permission to contact people. So we're going to feature Anthony, we're going to bring all those high schools together in one location. Um, for a really different event.
And we have members in our group, uh, ranging, uh, from Edman, so Kibon, uh, Malden, uh, Kenton, Missouri, Corning, Arkansas, Oklahoma, Arkansas. They've traveled every week, uh, to be in our, our, our virginal versels, or already members of our student population. We like to put the community in the college, I'm going to say that.
Questions?
Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Caleb Tinsley to come forward and talk about the career and transfer center open house.
Um, yeah, we have a thirty minutes per center, open house. I'm learning to do that for, for, we're changing to that and, um, that's going to be a new opportunity for our students. We had the, the two days and had over a hundred people come through. We did advertise it out to the community also, and we did have a few, this is a new thing for us, advertising more to the community as opposed to when we were just the university center. Um, so this gives us an opportunity to talk to me about, um, transferring and, um, caring as Central Methodist. We're re-big upping our suite of offices over there and, you know, kind of cleaning it up and kind of doing the spring cleaning here in the fall. But, uh, they're reclaiming and we're looking forward to, um, Keith Hudgens, who is the, um, in the parish center, moving down every last. That should be my thing soon. Any questions? You're thinking of that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
And on November second, uh, the Endowment Trust hosted the Murder Mystery Dinner. It was sold out. Uh, and we raised about seventy-five hundred dollars for scholarships. Uh, we had a title sponsor new this year, Black River Outdoors, so we want to give them a shout out and a thanks for making that event possible. Uh, then Kennet Trivia Night. Uh, this is a recurring event done through the Endowment Trust. Uh, had nine teams that, uh, came and participated, and we raised twenty-four hundred dollars to benefit scholarships specifically for students in and from Kennet. And then on November fourteenth, we were part of the Missouri Community College Association Conference and sent the, the listed nominees there, uh, to compete in statewide competition. And we had one statewide winner for Classified Staff Achievement Award, um, Mr. Ashley Barney. So, uh, good night at MCCA. And some upcoming events, uh, Missouri Stark Pilgers exhibit, uh, starting November fifth, will go through December thirteenth as part of our ongoing tenant gallery exhibits. Uh, Spanish Club Bake Sale November twentieth, uh, ten to three P M. So, uh, if you would like a baked good from the Spanish Department, they're right there in front of the plaster building right now. Uh, and then tomorrow will be Lighting the Tree of Hope in Remembrance. Uh, this is an event put on through our Behavioral Health, Behavioral Health Support Program. Uh, Mr. Corey Reynolds is the Program Manager for that. And this is an event in honor of those we've lost to suicide and overdose and to celebrate those in recovery. Uh, and then November twenty-third, a second part of, um, our Suicide Awareness Programming through Behavioral Health is Survivors of Suicide Event. It's going to be held twelve to two-thirty in the Robert Plaster Free Enterprise Center, Room one oh five. And then we will be closed November twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth. Uh, excuse me, we'll have no classes November twenty-seventh to twenty-ninth, and the college will be closed the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth for Thanksgiving. And then our next Patrons of the Art Show will be December third, uh, seven P M, Kenton Theater. Tickets are going fast, so go ahead and get your tickets. You can get them online or by calling the, uh, patron's number. And this, this show is Counting Angels Christmas, uh, direct from Ireland, an outstanding show.
I've got to give one more shout out to the patrons. My wife took our tickets in and I invited a lady that she used to work with to the, the Voice Choir. And she reluctantly dragged her two daughters along, and they said they're not going to miss anything else. They said it was absolutely amazing.
The, the Voice Choir was our performance that, uh, was most recently here, uh, direct from Austria. And they put on an absolutely incredible show with one of the most entertaining conductors I have ever watched. Uh, he was extremely high energy. Uh, then Music Department Choir Concert, Special Concert, December eighth, three P M, at the First Methodist Church. And then final exam weeks, we're drawing to the close of the fall semester, December ninth through the thirteenth. Then we will be closed December twenty-third to January third for Christmas. And that third is the present, we do have a session.
A motion to enter into the session.
I'll make a motion to enter into the session.
Uh, we got one.
I would second that motion.
There you go.
You can have my vote.
No, I'm getting longer than anyone. I know my role.
You're a little less enthusiastic if that were you.
That's okay.
Let me get them up. Item for consideration, discussion and vote. Uh, seven point one, consideration approval of FY Board of Trustees, meeting date changed.
Uh, this is partially related to the next item. Uh, the movement of the January board meeting has to do with when we get back and having time to actually prepare all the documents and be ready for the board, uh, board book while we're also starting up the semester. So we're asking that that be moved from the fifteenth to the twenty-second. And then in March, we have the same issue with spring break, the way it hit on the calendar. March nineteenth is being requested to be moved to March twenty-sixth.
Discussion or motion?
I'll move to approve the change.
I'll second.
All of you favor?
It's a wrong call. Trusty Featherson, Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Harrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shaw?
Yeah.
Trusty Williams?
Hmm, I was looking at the wrong page. Uh, number two, consideration holiday calendar change for spring, FY twenty-five.
Yes, so, uh, a couple of academic periods ago, we noticed that the spring semester and the fall semester had gotten out of sync. Meaning that there is an extra instructional week in the spring semester. The reason there is an extra instructional week in the spring semester is to ensure that we have enough Mondays and Thursdays in the instructional calendar. So when we were predominantly face to face, this was not an issue. As we have increased the number of students being online, part of the online instructional format is all deadlines are Sunday at midnight. The, all courses are required to be created so that work is due at the same time in all of your courses so that you reduce confusion about when your stuff is due. You can turn it in early, but every student is told over and over, your deadline is always Sunday at midnight. Then except spring break, fall break, and if you're in a eight week, that doesn't quite hold either. And the reason it doesn't is because we take the, we close classes on the Thursday before Easter and we take the Monday after Easter as college closed. Friday is also college closed. Then spring break is a partial week and fall break is a partial week and Thanksgiving is a partial week. All of this creates confusion for our students. By eliminating the Thursday and the Monday and then closing the entire period of spring break. We can actually take away the instruct, extra instructional week and have the exact same number of cardinal weeks that we have in the fall. So our online classes are set up modularly by week. So it also reduces faculty workload as well because you can take the fall system, change the dates, and it works with the spring system. So you don't have to keep up with two instructional patterns. Uh, our intention is to institute this change as of this spring. Uh, and to make that work this spring, we will not end the semester earlier, but we will have two weeks of finals this time to clean it up, and so it works out moving forward. So that is the proposal, and we have submitted to you the new holiday schedule.
All right, call for motion.
I'll make a motion to skip that.
Second, anyone?
I'll second.
Rogue call.
Trusty Featherson?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Trusty Hager?
Yes.
Trusty Harrison?
Yes.
Trusty Shaw? Trustee Shaw?
Yep.
Trustee Williams?
Yes. All right, item number three, audit resolution.
The audit went very, very well, we were within this morning in the audit committee meeting. No recommendations, a perfectly clean audit, and we was very impressed with everything, and we were very satisfied. Unless anybody has any questions about it, I'll make a motion to accept it.
And everybody has been given a hard copy of this year's audit for a good late evening reading.
Thanks for taking your time. All right, I got a lot, I got a lot.
Kudos, kudos, kudos to our staff.
Got a motion to accept the audit?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Featherson?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yep.
Trustee Harrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
On one related item left to come up in discussion today, the very, how we start reading audits in the back, which is what gets us that. But there is one question that asks, audit fee qualified as low risk audit fee? No, we have to have two years in a row with no recommendations at all. This is our second year, so the next year, we will be qualified as a low risk audit fee.
All right, on behalf of the whole board, thank you to the Audit Committee. We're glad and dear for your service, I appreciate your service. All right, number four, consideration approval of real estate purchase.
Yes, we have received a special allocation of funds from the state of Missouri for the purposes of purchasing property to enhance or expand workforce development programs. There is property available in Dexter that will allow us to meet those needs. And I request authorization from the board to negotiate for that property and execute all pertinent paperwork to make the purchase.
Motion.
Make a motion, we give that authority to Dr. Payne to negotiate the other program.
I'll second.
Second.
Trustee Featherson?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson? Yes, Trustee Hager?
Yes.
Trustee Harrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Sure.
Trustee Williams?
Yes. Item number seven, consideration approval of all personnel actions and associated documents.
You know, Mr. Harrison, I'd like to make a motion to approve all personnel actions and associated documents.
Thank you for that very fine motion. You might want to follow that.
I will follow that in a second.
Roll call.
Trustee Featherson?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Hager?
Yep.
Trustee Harrison?
Yes.
Trustee Shaw?
Of course.
Trustee.
Well, looking at the list, I think there's only one motion left to make.
I'd like a motion to reserve it.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oh.